Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the September 12th, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education. Long to order. And I would like to ask everyone to have a moment of silence and to remember the blessings that we have in our system. Okay. Thank you. We're going to start with our pledge of allegiance and we have Connor Beal. He's a fifth grade student at Bethlehem Elementary School here to lead us in the pledge. Connor is the son of Dustin and Natalie Beal and the grandson of David and Rosalyn Starnes and he's in Ms. Ashley Bumgarner's homeroom at Bethlehem Elementary School. Thank you for coming in the rain. You going to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to add that Connor's grandmother, Rosalyn Starnes, worked at Bethlehem Elementary, Natalie, for thirty years, all thirty years? Well, she was a teacher assistant at Bethlehem and just wonderful. So Connor, please tell your grandmother I send my regards, okay?
Thank you for coming. Board members, you've had a chance to look over the agenda that was in your packet for a couple of days. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a motion in a second, any questions, additions or deletions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And now I'd like to recognize Dr. Hefner for our honors and recognitions portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Board Member Odom, would you come and assist me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's always my pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of the board meeting. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing our Math Teacher of the Year, Monica Mitchell. Each year, school principals in North Carolina schools are encouraged to nominate the teacher they believe does the most effective job teaching mathematics in their school. For those nominated, each LEA selects one teacher to represent the best in mathematics teaching from the entire system. The teacher selected from each LEA receives a one-year membership in the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, recognition at the State Mathematics Conference, and a special memento of the occasion. The 2016-17 Mathematics Teacher of the Year for Alexander County is Monica Mitchell. Monica is a teacher at Ellendale Elementary School and she's in her 24th year of teaching in Alexander County, all of which has been at Ellendale. Ms. Mitchell is a graduate of Appalachian State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education. She was selected as Ellendale's Teacher of the Year in 2003 and 2013. She's married to Scott Mitchell and the couple has two children. Their oldest son, Landon Mitchell, is a sophomore at UNC Greensboro and Grant Mitchell is a senior at Alexander Central. Everyone at Ellendale knows Ms. Mitchell as the M&amp;M teacher, as she has M&amp;M figures of all sorts and every decoration imaginable throughout her classroom. So the next time I'm at Ellendale, I'm coming to get an M&amp;M. Congratulations to our 2016-17 Mathematics Teacher of the Year, Monica Mitchell.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you. No one has signed up for public comments, so we will move to the consent agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look that information over. Do you have, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. A motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to our reports section. And we have the audit, an audit report ending, for the year ending June 30th of 2017 by Michael Wyke. It was good to speak with you the other day. Thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hefner, pleased to be here tonight. As you said, it's the audit report for the year ending on June 30th, 2017. I think each of you have an electronic copy of the report. I'm just going to try to hit the highlights. If there's anything, if you've looked at it, have any questions, anything I go over, feel free to stop me at that point and we'll try to answer the question as best I can. But within the main financial statements, there's actually four opinion letters that we issue as your independent CPAs on these statements. The first one is on the actual financial statements, the numbers portion. And pleased to report that we issued an unqualified opinion on that, or unmodified, they changed the terms on that. Essentially what that means is there were no items that we noted during the course of our audit that would cause us to modify our opinion. That would be something where we said everything was in accordance with the accounting standards and appropriately presented, except for this item that would cause us to modify it. So it's commonly referred to as a clean audit report, so please report that. Then in the back of that document, you're going to find three reports on the compliance portion of the audit. And the compliance portion really takes more time than the financial portion. This is where we're looking at compliance with all the applicable federal and state grants as well as just sound internal controls, making sure that there's policies and procedures in place at the district, all the way down to the school level, to make sure that there's not going to be a material error in the numbers or misappropriation of assets, your controls, and make sure that we're, we've got the policies and procedures in place to make sure that money just isn't walking out the door. So that's really what we're looking at primarily on those. So on all three of those reports, again, clean audit reports on those, so please report that. If we noticed any items, you can still have what's called a financial statement finding on internal controls, even though it's a clean report. And we did not notice anything that would be a finding to report in the statements either. To mention the actual numbers a little bit, and again, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail, I do want to warn you, if you look at the statements, I always tell you every year, don't focus in on Exhibits 1 and 2. These are the government-wide statements, they include your fixed assets and your pension liabilities. And that's something where if you look at that in bottom number, net position, you think that's your assets, you know, that's really just not accurate for you guys to manage off of because you're not going to go out and sell a school or anything like that to come up with funding. So what you want to look at is the fund financial statements, and those are the ones that start on Exhibit 3. And normally what people focus on, on the school board, is going to be your general fund, fund balance, the money that comes from Alexander County. And on that fund balance, we lost about $300,000 this year. And over the course of these years, if y'all remember back, several of the members have been here for several years, whenever we had the R. A. money, Alexander County built the fund balance up. And in my opinion, that's what the district should have done. They did not use that, didn't spend that extra federal money when they got it, sort of saved that for the rainy day. And now you're sort of bleeding that down a little bit, bit by bit. The thing is, just always make sure that you keep a mindful eye on that now because it's been several years that we're sort of bleeding it down a little bit. And you don't want that fund balance to get too low and, you know, to make cuts if you need to, and it keeps going down. The thing is, there's one section in here where it talks about your pension liability and it shows your covered salaries for the past four years. And this covered salaries are being full-time employees who are subject to earning retirement and healthcare benefits. Those numbers are about $26 million rough for the past four years. Everyone here knows that there's been, you know, some raises that's going on in those past four years, probably seven to 10 percent roughly, if you tuck it on the whole average for the district. So what that really tells you, if your dollars are constant, but you've been paying these raises, what's really happened is you're doing the same work with less people. And I think I'm probably not telling anyone here, but that's just the general challenges and struggles that the Boards of Education are facing right now throughout North Carolina. The other thing on the numbers portion I wanted to touch on is on the school food service program. And this is another item that we mention every year. The general fund is having to fund money into the school food service program during the years to help cover their operating costs. I think it's, things are getting a little bit better on that. I discussed that with management, I think they're still working diligently on that to try to come up with ideas as how to save money going forward. Just want to make sure that we mentioned that as an area that I would suggest management to continue to focus on going forward on that. But in addition to that, the, that's all I was going to go over on the actual numbers portion, you have two other documents, PDF documents. One is a required communications document. This is information that we are required by our professional standards to communicate to the Board of Education, and I'm not going to go through that in detail. The main thing here is to know that we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management throughout the course of the audit. We go out, visit with the individual schools, all the different department heads, and whenever we ask for information, we're giving that information timely. Any documents we want to see is given to us, you know, normally within the hour or two. I get worried whenever I ask for a document, I don't get it until three days later. Because obviously as an auditor, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, well, do they really have this document, they have to create it to give it to me. So, you know, I'm very appreciative of the openness and the, to that information whenever we need that, so please to report that. And there were no disagreements with management. If we have a disagreement with an accounting treatment of a specific item, we report that to the governing board. We noted no such items during the scope of our audit. There was one item that's in a management letter, and this would be something that we are required to, to report to the board, that would be an internal control or a compliance violation that is not significant enough to go into the actual financial statements. There was one teacher at the high school that had a snack shack that was operating that was in conflict with the Department of Agriculture's rules for competitive food. In the end, you can't sell any snacks during the lunch hours. That would, USDA says if you're selling snacks, that's taking money away from the USDA program. But immediately when management found out about this program, they stopped it, so it's not an issue going forward. But again, something that we are indeed required to report on that. Does anyone have any questions about the audit whatsoever? We're very appreciative of management, everyone in the finance department, all the department heads, they help us out and make things go as smoothly as possible.
Great, thank you so much. We appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I'd now like to recognize Glendora Yarborough for Communities and Schools Update. How are you?
Good. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Board chair members, and I'm Dr. Hefner. I'm glad to be here this afternoon. I just wanted to give you a brief update on communities and schools. And the very first thing I wanted to tell you is that we have a new name. Well, I think it's a new name, but when I was thinking about what I was going to say this afternoon, I realized that we've almost had our new name for a year now. So, well, we are Communities and Schools of Northwest North Carolina, and it's due in part to being in Alexander County, so we're excited about that. But we also are expanding into Ash County. And we could not feel that we would be justified to keep our name as Communities and Schools of Wilkes when we were expanding into, we had already expanded into Alexander County in 2012 and now expanding into Ash County. We felt like we, it was time for us to change our name and our board decided on the name of Communities and Schools of Northwest North Carolina. So, wanted to give you that little update. And also, you probably already know this, but I wanted to tell you where the site coordinators are in your schools. Brittany Myers is at Taylor School and Stony Point Elementary. She's splitting those two schools. We have Jordan Monday, who is at Hidden Knight Elementary, and Stephanie Davis is teaching freshman success at the high school. We also received a grant this past grant cycle from JCPC, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, to bring strengthening families to Alexander County. We're very, very excited about that. We'll have our very first class, September the 28th. Those classes will be fourteen classes, so there'll be seven weeks with two each week on Mondays and Thursdays. Stephanie and Angie Yates will be teaching the parent component. And the way it works is the families will come together and have a meal, and then they'll separate, and the parents will go in one classroom. And Stephanie and Angie will teach that class, and then Brittany and Jordan will teach the teen class. And I'll be their site coordinator to be there every, every meeting, just to make sure that things go well and if there's any kind of issues with the families or anything that. We had a training, a two-day training that we went to, to learn about strengthening families. And I think it's going to be an amazing program. It's evidence-based and it will be mandated through the court, and then we'll open it up to other families as well.
Great.
So we're excited about that. And we'll have two sessions of that starting September to about November and then starting back in January to have them again until about April. You should have received in the mail an invitation to Rachel's Challenge. Did you receive that? I wanted to personally invite you to that, that is next Tuesday, at the High School Auditorium. It starts from six to seven, and it's informational meeting, and everybody here is invited. And invite your family and friends. It's to learn about Rachel's Challenge and how to spread kindness in Alexander County. That's through another grant that we got through Duke Energy. So we're very, very excited about that. And I gave you this little, Dr. Hefner passed this out, and it says Caitlin Pickin, and that's because she's our Resource Development Director, and we just got these today, and I asked her if I could bring them. I'm Glendora, but she's, she's going to be giving these out to donors, and so we wanted to give you one. But as I was looking at the back of it, well, inside is our CIS model. This is Communities and Schools model, and we are evidence-based. And so this is what we bring into the schools. So I'm not going to go over that, but I wanted you to look at the snapshot on the back. And I have to be honest and say I only looked at it when I was sitting right there. And so the very first one where it says total sites served, it says 26 percent. Just take that percent sign off. I don't know why our printer put that percent. It's 26 schools. So in the two counties, we serve 26 schools. And you can see that we serve 12,715 students in both the counties and case-managed 356 students. So that, that, once again, that percentage sign needs to come off of there. And you, but you can look at the percentage, we're data-driven. Every student that we serve, those 356 students, they are entered into a data system through our state and national office. And so according to what the students' needs are, so let's say that a student was missing a lot of school and their goal could be attendance. So of those 356 students, 98 percent who we listed as needing a goal to improve attendance, 98 percent of those students improved. So does that, you can see the numbers there, that if there was a behavior goal, then 97 percent of those 356 students improved. And this is third-party evaluated, so it goes to our state and national office, but then it goes out to a third party to evaluate, to make sure that it's true, which we're proud of that. So you can see, well, 100 percent, if they had an academic issue, 100 percent of those 356 students. Now, that doesn't mean that all 356 students had an academic goal, but the ones that did, 100 percent of them improved. We get those reports and send them to the principals each quarter so they can see that the site coordinators doing what they say they do. So that is just a little update on us, and I will entertain any questions.
Before you do that, Glendora, would you expand a little bit on the reasoning behind moving the site coordinators from the two middle schools to three of the elementary schools?
Yes. So when we very first started in Alexander County, Dr. Hefner had written a dropout prevention grant, and she had written it for the middle and the high school. And so that's where the student advocates, that's what we called them, and that's where they were. Well, as communities and schools, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is research and keeping up with the research and what the research says. And we know that research says that students, they need to, we need to start in the elementary level with them. By the time they're in the sixth grade, research says that they've already decided whether they're going to graduate from high school or not. And so we felt like we weren't getting them soon enough, early enough. And so we went to Dr. Hefner and said, can we move back and move those site coordinators to the elementary level? And our goal is to serve all seven elementary schools with a site coordinator. And we have a grant opportunity coming up very soon to do that in Alexander County. So yes, that's why we moved back to the elementary level, because we need to get them earlier rather than later. It's almost too late in the middle school. It's not too late, but it's almost.
Great.
Yes.
Questions?
I have a question, but I just want to thank you because you've worked with our county and helped get this program going. And I remember some of the first meetings we had about communities and schools, and I can't believe where it's come to from where we were. So thank you for leading that for us.
You're welcome, and thank you, and hang on because we're growing. And I'll be back to tell you about that.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the ready review, and I'd recognize the Director, Teresa speaks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hefner, members of the board. Hopefully one of my favorite days for the school year, because I get to come and brag. And they did not let me down this year. I did want to start off tonight by telling you, I read an article where the state superintendent, when he was interviewing about the ready review last Friday, talked about how there were some highs in North Carolina and some lows. And one of the lows was that there were more low-performing schools in this state than there were last year. Those are the schools that make the Ds or Fs, and there's all kinds of things that go behind those. And I wrote a letter last week, Friday morning, when I got in, to our principals, thanking them, how they kept all that work away from me because we don't have any of those in our county. All of our schools receive all of those. Before we start, I usually like to just remind you of the verbiage and the acronyms that I use. GLP, remember, is grade level proficient, and that's where the most of the data I'll talk about tonight is that, that's threes or above. And then CCR is college and career ready, and that's where they have to score a four or a five to be in that. The performance grades themselves are still 80 percent achievement or the proficiency and 20 percent growth. And the growth is one of those things that's hard to understand exactly. It is now all figured by EVOs, which is a system the state hires. And, but if it's a zero index, that means that's an expected year's growth, that's where the average kids grew. And then if you go down from that, below negative 1.99, they didn't grow enough, so they do not meet. But from that negative 1.9 all the way up to positive 1.99, that's considered met. And when they convert that to percentage, that's 70 percent up to 85 percent, and that is two or above, and that succeeds. So they give you a percentage, but they've converted it from that index score. And I'm going to start with our elementary schools. In our elementaries, if you look at the first one, which is Bethlehem, the students at Bethlehem this year was awesome. They went up in all areas of achievement and growth and overall performance. This is the sad part, and I don't know who was going to cry more, me or Mr. Peake, when they missed exceeding by .09 on their index score and only .3 percentage points. So they did extremely well. They made a more sound B than they did before and went from a C to a V in math. Ellendale Elementary School went from a C to a B in math. And although they still did not meet growth, they did improve their growth index by 1.59. And if you look at just specifically reading, where they only give us a percent, they did meet growth in reading. They stayed the same or improved in all of their performance grades. Overall, they stayed the same, reading they stayed the same, but they did improve in math. Hidden Knight Elementary School improved in all areas of achievement. They had 17 percent more students pass science this year than last. That was an incredible growth for them. And again, which was even probably more heartbreaking, they were only .06 or three tenths of a point from needing growth. So, but they did really improve, and so they've set that goal for this year. They improved in all performance areas and went from a D to a C in reading. Stony Point Elementary School went up in all areas of achievement except science. But if you look at their science score, it's still above what we consider core proficiency of 80 percent, so they didn't really lose a lot there. In a school that small, one student can make that little percentage. They went up in all areas of growth and exceeded growth with a 2.8 index or an 87 percent growth. And if you look at their math growth, it is 89.5 percent, which is incredible growth in math at Stony Point. Sorry. Where am I at? Which one?
Sherwood.
Oh, I know why. So which way? Sherwood. They improved both their achievement and growth in reading, they continued to meet growth, and they did very well in their reading growth. And like Stony Point Elementary School, even though they dropped in science, they still met the core proficiency of 80 percent. Again, in those small schools, those are two of our smallest, one student can make that little bit of difference. Taylorsville Elementary School continued to improve. They met the core proficiency of 80 percent in math this year, overall math, out of all their grade levels. Last year, they met it at third grade, this year, they met that for all math in their school, which is really, really awesome. They improved in everything but science, and they raised their math percent proficient 11 points. Even though they did not exceed growth, they still were above the average year growth at .37, so they were above the zero index. And that's hard to do considering they exceeded by four points, over four points last year. And that's hard for a school to, if you exceed that far and have already grown the kids that far, to grow them again the next year that much, that's hard to do. So that's still excellent. They did exceed in reading. They also maintained their B for this year and even raised their score one point, so they raised their performance score one point. This brings us to our last elementary school alphabetically, but certainly not our least. They were not last in anything this year. Wittenburg Elementary School actually tied Taylorsville for the second highest overall performance grade. They were both only one point behind Bethlehem Elementary School. I did provide in-year executive more details of each of these, so I just tried to pull some of the highlights. At Wittenburg, they celebrated their B, and I just wanted to show you all. This was a cake that they had made on Friday morning, and it actually, I found out later, was made by one of our juniors at Alexander Central. Mallory, um, thank you, Glenn, I'm looking at her mom and not thinking of her last name. But Mallory, I thought it was really a cool cake, and as she told me, her daughter made it, she goes here. All right, our middle and high schools. East Alexander Middle School improved in growth in all areas this year. The one that I was really impressed with was their math growth was only, math growth was only nine tenths away from exceeding, even though their math proficiency was extremely low. To me, that shows the school did well. They grew those kids. They were very low to begin with, so you have to look at that when you look at your Their growth, if you actually computed that, I told you beginning, the performance grade is 80 percent achievement, 20 percent growth. In my opinion, it should be opposite. And so I computed theirs that way just to see, and if we computed their math that way, they'd have a 77 B. Their overall performance stayed the same, but their reading and And it actually, I found out later, was made by one of our juniors at Alexander Central. Um, Mallory, um, thank you, Glenn, I'm looking at her mom and not thinking of her last name. But Mallory, I thought it was really a cool cake, and as she told me, her daughter made it, she goes here. All right, our middle and high schools. East Alexander Middle School improved in growth in all areas this year. The one that I was really impressed with was their math growth was only, math growth was only nine tenths away from exceeding, even though their math proficiency was extremely low. To me, that shows the school did well. They grew those kids. They were very low to begin with, so you have to look at that when you look at your proficiency. Um, their growth, if, if you actually computed that, I told you beginning, the performance grade is eighty percent achievement, twenty percent growth. In my opinion, it should be opposite. And so, I computed theirs that way just to see. And if we computed their math that way, they'd have a seventy-seven B. Their overall performance stayed the same, but their reading and math performance both increased. They met overall growth again and improved their index. Their science is almost at core proficiency. And I've lost my best, um, West. Um, West, if you look, they did not exceed this year, but again, they came very close. They had a very high exceeding, exceeding last year too. But in math, their growth was ninety-one point three, so they definitely exceeded in math. Over ninety percent growth is really, really high. And so, and then they kept everything pretty close to the same, they're still the same grade. And a lot of their things, if you notice, only changed one or two points. So, they really worked hard in their math this year. For the first time ever, I get to report on two high schools. I think that's just a good thing of all the opportunities we have for our students here. Um, AEC, which is the bottom one, of course, they only gave the Math One test this year. So, their scores are only based on that, and we can't compare them to anything from last year. But they grew seventy-nine percent of their students in Math One, so that was good. And then they also managed to get a B on their first ever report card. Alexander Central High School maintained their eighty-six percent graduation rate, which is point six below the state's, and they met growth again this year. Um, before I go on, I do want to mention that I've, I've given you a bunch of celebrations tonight where we did well. There are places where we need to improve. We do know where those are, and we dig down into those every day. But I shared with the principals when I told them, um, Friday that they could share with their staff their scores, I told them they should take time to celebrate these good things we have done. And then we will dig down, starting with the coaches. I'm already preparing stuff for them to start on Friday, really digging deep into our data to find our areas, areas of improvement. These are special, um, highlights. I call them like the signing stars. And this is another way we look at our data to improve. We try to find where things are going well, and then we get together by grade levels or principals or sometimes schools and look and see, well, what did you do that we didn't do by this subject? But then that school sometimes helps that school. For, um, Hidden Knight Elementary, you saw that they had improved, but one of the things I found really, really interesting about their improvement was the growth that they did. In last year, only fifty-two percent of their fourth graders passed the math test. This year, sixty-two point five percent of that same group of students passed it. So, they took a group of students and had that many more pass it the next year. They also managed to get four point seven more of those same set of students to pass their reading test. So, that class only passed forty-nine point three percent of the tests they took altogether in fourth grade, but they passed sixty-three percent of the tests they took in fifth grade, same group of students. And so, those are some of the ways we look at it, and that's wonderful for that school. Bethlehem did almost the same thing with their fifth grade, but they increased the number who passed reading more than they did the math. So, we would look at those two and see which is doing which versus reading and math. Stony Point and Sugarloaf also increased their cohorts proficiency rate, but in two different subjects. Stony Point increased the number proficient in math from fourth to fifth by ten point one percentage points, same group of students. And Sugarloaf increased the number proficient in reading from fourth to fifth by sixteen point six percentage points, same group of students. So, that's why we look at each other as we go. West increased the number of students math proficient in both of their cohorts, so they did very well in math. The last two schools I want to look at are Taylarsville and Wittenburg. Both of these two schools did incredibly well, and both have Bs for the year. But I think that we are doing them a disjustice if we do not look at their percentage where they are over eighty percent proficient, both of these schools in math. In the, which grade was that? Um, actually, Taylarsville was over eighty percent in both third and fourth grade. And Wittenburg was over eighty percent in fourth grade. That's what we call the core proficiency. That's where you want to make sure your kids are getting it just in their classroom. And so, it's incredible that they did that, and you might see a little bit of why that's incredible as we go along. Our district results, so this is all those tests added in together. In science, four of our seven elementary schools scored over eighty percent proficient. Oh, I wanted to tell you that before, I'm sorry. And when we were talking about the proficiencies in science, four of our seven elementary schools scored over eighty percent proficient. So, that is a huge amount. Our science is doing really well. And when you see our overall science for fifth and eighth grade, we're doing very well in there. As a district, we once again increased our overall proficient rate. I think it's point, I can't see without my glasses, it's point one. So, we did increase, and we have steadily stayed very high up for our overall proficient. Now, remember our district, when we were looking at our schools, they don't just take our schools and average those. And some people think that's kind of why it does it, but you'll see some things a little bit different. The reason our overall proficiency here was increased, but yet our EOCs went down, but our EOGs went up, is because they take every test every kid in the school system takes and divide that, the number passed by the total number of tests. So, like, one of our eighth graders could count four times if they took reading, math, Math One, and their science score. So, they don't exactly average out this way that you would think in your head. With our fours and fives, our EOGs did not increase as much as we did before, but they did increase slightly as point seven. And so, we did go down a little with fours and fives, but it is point two if you can't see it on there. We went down two tenths of a point is all that we went down. And now, this one's one that a lot of you all like. And if you notice this one, it is underlined. And what I did last year, some of you asked for some of this stuff. When I did a separate spreadsheet and pulled out all of that down into just our surrounding counties or the, um, one hundred and fifteen counties, I made those spreadsheets where you can click and it'll redo them, and I linked them for you all, and you all have access. So, Deborah's going to load this after tonight, and then you all will be able to go in and play with those. If you don't like to, you don't have to, but some of you I know like to do that. With surrounding counties, I looked at everything. I couldn't fit it all on one slide, so here we have just the major areas. For performance overall, we ranked third under Caldwell and Iredale Statesville. But if you look at that, we're only eight tenths, point eight away from Caldwell, which was the highest. So, that was the spread between us and Caldwell. So, that's overall performance out of all of us in the surrounding districts. We again ranked above all schools with our ACT scores in our surrounding area. And I kind of like the ACT measure because to me, that kind of represents every teacher from kindergarten up had some hand in helping that kid make their ACT score. The students, um, our EOCs are not as good this year, which you will see, so we're not as high ranked in those. The, um, next one's the EOGs and the math EOGs, I put in yellow. We are second in the, all the surrounding districts. And then after those, I know, um, our reading ones are there. And then after that, usually I don't include those next few, but I included those four right after that. The third grade math, fourth grade math, third grade reading, and fourth grade reading. Just to show y'all, our teachers this year in third and fourth grade, we were number one on those, both subject areas in third and fourth for all of our surrounding districts. And I just think that was phenomenal. And then the last three are our science, and, um, we were second, our first overall, and an individual in science out of our surrounding districts. And all the rest of those by every grade level and everything is in that sheet that you can get into if you want to look at those. Then our district to the state. Above, overall, we're above the state average. And, but as you could guess from some of the previous slides, we are under in all of our EOCs. The Math One score is the only one that was affected by AEC. Since this is district, it's all of our schools. And EOCs would be, um, with Math One, they'd be affected by AEC and then our eighth grade Math One scores. So, those are all in with the Math One. The other ones are just ACHS because, um, English Two is sophomores, and so none of those are there yet. And then they are this year, so English Two next year will affect that. And then biology or juniors, so it'll be three years before the biology scores include both of our high schools. On the next one, um, we are well above the state average in the elementary grades, but only above in eighth grade at the middle schools. But if you look at the ones in each of our elementary, all three grades, we are quite a bit above the state average. And if you, um, because our elementary schools did so well, we are above the state average in reading, math, and science, with our science score almost at core proficiency for the entire district. So, we are almost at eighty percent for our district in science. The next thing that I'm going to do is tell you, um, where we rank overall out of all hundred and fifteen districts. Um, before I do, I did want to mention, and I asked Ms. Mahaffey for a little help this afternoon because I thought it was interesting to look at. I thought I would tell you where we ranked in, um, per pupil funding out of those same hundred and fifteen districts. This year, and for the same year that I'm giving you this data for, for that same year in sixteen seventeen, per pupil funding, we ranked eighty-six in the state for overall funding. For local funding, we ranked ninety-six. Now, where do we rank? Overall, GLP forty-fourth. Overall, instead of all hundred and fifteen, we ranked thirty-eighth out of CCR, kids making fours and fives. That is in the top third of the state. Third grade reading, twenty-third. The rest I just did it for twenty-five or above. Third grade reading, CCR, fours and fives, twenty-second. The ACT was only one above the twenty-five, and again, because I think that kind of represents everything, I did keep it in here. And we were twenty-sixth in the state in our ACT scores. So, or did we have any in the top twenty? Yes, we did. Third grade math, twenty-first. Third grade math, CCR, eighteenth out of all one hundred and fifteen. Can we get any better? Wait for it. Fourth grade math, GLP eighth. And fourth grade math, fours and fives, eighth in the state of North Carolina. So, um, like I said, and this is also the thing that this was linked, if you want to look at the hundred and fifteen states, you can do that. Um, again, I'm just, I just love it. If you could be in my office when I start going through this stuff, um, I start emailing going, I haven't, haven't went through everything yet, but listen to what I found, listen to what I found. And I was emailing Dr. Heckner and Dr. Curry who were at meetings that day. I get so excited when the principals come in, and I can tell them how well they did. It's just, it's so wonderful to be able to brag and, and to say how good they did here in Alexander County. And it's, it's our teachers, it's the way we do things. If you look at those math scores, um, those kids, the fourth and third grade, those are the kids that started on these new math, as they call it, the common core, when they were kinders. And you see that now, fourth graders are doing well, the third, as they come up. And that trend, as those kids continue to go up, should continue with our math scores rising. Our teachers are getting better and better at it. Our coaches are wonderful at making, helping them do things, do their learning focused maps and continue it. So, there's even more excitement coming, I'm sure, this year and in years to come. Are there any questions?
Just to comment, our students, our staff, and also the parents of those students, because a lot of that, uh, homework, you know, much beloved homework. But, uh, those are phenomenal numbers, and this entire system should be, uh, extremely elated. But we should also be keenly aware that if you're ninety-sixth in local funding and then you're the eightieth percentile, um, per pupil funding, you know, there, there is room for improvement. And, uh, you know, um, they're doing a lot with a little. And that's from the administrators, to the custodians, to the maintenance folks, to the bus drivers. Um, but, uh, I commend our staff and children for doing a lot with a little.
And I think what's great about this county, Mr. Heckner, is they do it well. And I think that's part of it, that's what keeps our county, they just keep going. I mean, they throw more at them, and they just keep, but that doesn't mean they can't throw more to us. They could give us a little more so that they could. I just, sometimes I wonder what they could do if they had, and I, I forget what it was, Ms. Mahaffey, that one county, thousand per pupil that they had. And she and I discussed, what, what could we do with that per pupil? Where could we get those kids? If we can get them where we got them now with this.
Was that the state and local funding added together equaled seventeen thousand?
Yeah, that was the total.
We definitely have a lot to be proud of, from the community and of board education.
Any other questions?
Thank you. And you will have these links.
Yes, she's going to upload the PowerPoint to your, the whole agenda.
Okay.
And you'll be able to link them.
Okay.
I just didn't want you to see the cake before I.
Thank you. Um, I would recognize Jill Peake to give us an update on Bethlehem Elementary School.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Heckner, thank you first of all for having me this night. And I just want to say on behalf of my staff, we do work hard, and we do appreciate all of what you do. And I know lots of times that, um, even myself don't realize the amount of hours that you put in to that seat right there. And, um, we thank you very much for all you do, and you are a part of, of why we're so successful as well, so thank you. Um, we're excited and looking forward to a new year with our students and our families. And, um, we're ready to, to soar into a new year, that's what I mean. Um, part of that soaring is, um, a, a lot of new family members this year. At the end of last year, we said, no, we won't have, we won't have too many new ones, but it just turned out that we do. Uh, this, these are just a few of them. Uh, new to our family, we have Larissa Ross, who is teaching in kindergarten. Jessica Reed in kindergarten. Erica Crawford, who I am very proud to say, um, I could say yesterday that we are fully staffed because Ms. Crawford was one of our staff members who we were waiting on. She was being held to a thirty-day contract in Willows County, and yesterday was our first day with her. So, a lot of celebrating there. And then today we turn right around and have a teacher assistant resignation. So, no, as of right now, we're not fully staffed, but we will be soon. Um, Heidi Minton transferred to us, the EC department, um, from East Alexander. Uh, Mr. James Spennel, and now Ms. Stout are serving in the OT position and assistant position that we had. Ms. DeeDee Foster's in the cafeteria. Seth Maul was an asset we gained from East as well. Um, and Ricky Rogers, our, um, social worker, as well as Casey Loma, the teacher assistant. So, um, we don't have them all pictured here because it's very difficult, other than the first day, to get them all in picture at the same time. So, as I go throughout the presentation today, you'll, um, you'll see a few of them as well. So, when I thought about what we would present on the first, um, first board meeting of the school year, um, I asked a question of my staff members, and I asked them, what are you looking forward to sharing with your students this year? And, uh, it was very difficult for many of them to narrow it down to just a few things, but I told them I only had a limited amount of time. So, uh, they, they were narrowed it down to the ones that were, uh, they were most excited about, and we're going to talk about a few of those tonight. Uh, first of all, in kindergarten, um, I don't know how many of you have ever had any experience with a, a classroom or a group of twenty kindergarten students, five-year-olds, but, um, it's a little short of amazing, the things that happen, uh, in kindergarten, just in the first two weeks of school. And, um, the kindergarten team as well as first and second grade team, one of the things that they were most excited about was being able to provide some opportunities for students in phonics instruction through the Orton-Gillingham, um, method of teaching phonics. It's a, um, that we had training.
We had training last year for, actually, if we would have had all of our staff to remain in that time, we about had babies by all means, we would have had all of them trained in K-2 this year. But we're celebrating lots of ways there. So you'll hear that mentioned several times throughout the presentation today. As far as kindergarten goes, even the smallest thing of even, instead of getting out of a car, being escorted into a preschool or daycare, they're coming off of buses and out of cars and walking independently, on their own, to class. So when I say, think it's short of amazing, the transformation that happens there in two weeks, where that's a part of it. Not to mention, you get to be in breakfast. No longer is it family style, you know, they do the balancing act with the grab and go and do very well. And of course, all of those things add up to successful students, not just in kindergarten, but throughout their school career, building independence and that kind of thing. Here, you see the kindergartner on the left there, you would have never known, they had first-day jitters, but they read a story called first-day jitters, and I'm not going to ruin the ending for you, but it was not the students who had the jitters. So after the story, they were able to enjoy some jitter juice, and then there's some self-portraits there on the right of their first day of school, which I thought were quite well done. First grade is excited. I really had to pound on these ladies, they just wanted to share too much. But the things, the three things that they narrowed it down to, you've probably heard a lot lately about growth mindset, and basically, in a nutshell, instead of a student saying, "I can't do that," a student says, "I can't do that yet." You know, having a positive outlook that, no, I might not be able to do this right now, but I'm going to work towards goals and I'm going to be able to do it pretty soon. So that's what that little girl on the left is doing. They talk to them about stretching their brains and being able to do things that they maybe couldn't, and she's stretching some gack or putty or something that they made that day. So also, they're excited about a new app called Seesaw. It is, oh, it provides a multitude of resources for our teachers, our students, and parents. It's a communication resource, for one. At the top of the page, you see students there with their iPads, and it doesn't look like a typical math problem, but that's what you see there, those square, squares, orange squares. Each student had a math problem with orange squares, they were working on number bonds, and they took a picture through the Seesaw app of their math problems. And then the picture below that, where you see the four and the five with orange squares, were able to work on number bonds and actually manipulate and draw on their iPads to show the number. But the neatest thing is, then they send it to their parents, you know, seconds after they've completed it. Now, you talk about somebody loving that, the parents have really loved it. They're able to record it in their journal and then share it with their parents, and the parents can comment on it or like it right then, right there. So I know all of you have children, and probably the sweetest thing is their voices, especially when they're this age, whether they're, you know, saying a prayer or reading a story. This afternoon, Ms. Horn shared a recording of a first grader reading a story, just that sweet, sweet sound, but that first grader was able to send it to their mom as soon as they were finished. And we would have thought that we had handed that mother, yes, that part of gold. So it's great, they're really excited about that. They're going to try to use that in kindergarten, first and second grade, similar to the dojo communication tool they use in the upper grades. And then again, you see Orton-Gillingham there. The students on the right with the plaques that are full of sand, they were representing the letters there that make the "k" sound, and of course, that's the N-K. So they are excited most about those things, especially the parent tool where they can, like and comment in real time, so to speak. Second grade, they also are looking forward to the OG this year. This is, in kindergarten, first and second grade, this is the first time they've been able to start a school year with the Orton-Gillingham method, because they all received training at various points last year, so they were able to actually start from the very beginning this year. We have three in second grade that are trained and willing to go, so these students are looking forward, also the teachers are looking forward to sharing STEM projects and digital learning projects with their students, all while trying to remember that, to focus on building relationships and fostering a love for learning. Here, they made a friendship sushi. No, they didn't really, it wasn't really sushi, it was marshmallow treats and marshmallow cream and I think a gummy roll there that symbolizes the, I don't know if that's bacon or anything. But they definitely were having a good time, just getting to know each other in second grade on the first day of school. Then third grade, these students are participating in what looks a lot like a STEM activity, but it's actually a coding activity, all with the focus of building personal and group perseverance. Again, that growth mindset, developing a positive growth mindset. Their task there was to build a tower out of, believe it or not, gumdrops and toothpicks, I think, that would support a book for at least ten seconds. And many of them said, "Oh, I can do this." It was a little harder than they thought, you know, to support it for ten seconds. But it's so neat to be there, to be able to see them, although they were doing it individually, to see them talking with each other, "Well, why don't we do this and try this," you know? So it was great, an activity in perseverance, and instead of saying, "I can't do this," continuing to try and having a growth mindset, "If I can do this, I will be able to do this." That helps to them, for them to learn how to set appropriate goals, realistic goals, and making a plan to accomplish those goals. All of our kindergarten, third, and fifth grade students will be working with data folders again this year, in an effort to, to actually be able to see what their goal is and to talk about their goals and their progress with their teacher and their parents and other students as well. Fourth grade, the biggie in fourth grade seems to be the Raleigh trip every year, and it is a great trip. Teachers have said they were excited to share the Raleigh trip because, you know, after a lengthy study of North Carolina, including developing and understanding of the state's government, it's always really neat to see them pull it all together as they, this really does happen, you know, for the understanding that they gain. And there, I put on the right, that's a picture of Ms. Crawford, that's our fourth grade celebration this week. So we're anxious to spend some time with her and off to a great start. They're also excited about the one-to-one push-out. I've seen them use their Chromebooks in spelling, math, ELA, incorporating science and social studies with those, and that really too is kind of short of amazing. You know, of course, we had piloted classes last year. So the toughest thing for third and fourth graders is getting them to realize that when you try to log on, it has to be exact, you know, it can't be a little off. And once they got over that hump, which it took them, you know, three or four days, they realized that, yes, I could do this, and they are running with it, so they're loving that. So that's a great opportunity for our students. The next thing is fifth grade, and they also mentioned the one-to-one transition as well. Their quote here says, "We believe that the use of technology will only enhance our students' learning and will better prepare them for future college and or career experiences." They are also really pumped about science. We've got two teachers, have three teachers there this year, we only have two that really, really have a love of teaching science. And they started, all of them started out the year, the first week with a science exploration activity. They were presented with a white substance, an unknown white substance, and they had to try to, they did things to the substance, tried to figure out what it was. That was provided by the teacher, and then they were asked also, the ones that wanted to, to bring one substance from home. Yeah, I know, that might be a little scary, but it all turned out okay. Thankfully, but the kids loved, you should have seen them, "This one looks a little soapy, this one's, you know, caking up." But just any time they can get their hands on it, it's great. And then, of course, when you can add the writing and the reading and speaking and listen to it, that just makes it, brings it all together and makes it come. So them to print, the opportunity to work with, through the scientific method, that was a great opportunity for them early on. And then, of course, I don't know how we'd do it without these ladies, this department. They do get our kids to understand that they can move mountains. And their excitement statement this year is just simply, "We're excited and looking forward to seeing our kids learn new skills." Sometimes you might just, it's great to see the lightbulb, and sometimes the lightbulb might come in just little, little glimmers, but when you can see that huge glow, there's nothing like that. So these ladies are pretty awesome, and they're such a positive group. I take my inspiration for them, from them sometimes. Heidi Minton actually is new to our school, but of course, we knew her for the EC department initially, you know? They're a great team down there. And then last, actually, not last, but the enhancement classes, they all look a little different. We've got a lot of celebrating there this year and excitement there. Of course, we've got the new playground in the background, thanks to our PTO and our parents for years now, collecting that. So Mr. Maes, of course, he jumped on board, he said, "Got to have some rules, got to have some, you know, some things to keep them safe." So that's how he got to spend his first week of school, is taking the kids that had not been out, particularly to the playground to visit, and going over the rules out at the Eagle's Nest. Then in fourth and fifth grade, the Gynants classes, Ms. Arbour mentioned bringing kindness to Alexander County, showing our kids that kindness does matter, it does matter, and it matters to folks of all ages. The Gynants classes in fourth and fifth grade, the first couple of weeks of school, worked through a program, Cards for Hospitalized Kids, they didn't know the name, you know, kids, who the cards would go to, but the excitement, you see some of the samples of the cards that they created, just to have that service mindset in doing something for someone else, they really enjoyed that. And then the BES course in the music department, looking forward to just using, continuing the variety of music tools that we have. They're using boom whackers up at the top there, they kind of like those things that you do together at the ballgame, to be together, I don't know what they call those, but these actually are...
I don't know, the folks around us the past few weeks have had cowbells.
Oh, well, no, he may have some cowbells in there, but this day they were using boom whackers. They're of different lengths, and the kids are really amazed to be able to learn through those kinds of things. They also have guitars and xylophones and drums, so I look forward. There, the music room actually backs up to my office, kind of, and sometimes I tease Mr. Moody because I tell him, you know, of course, I can hear the deep sound, I tell him, "I think the darlings are next door playing the first one." But he gets a kick out of that. So we're excited to expand upon our course as well, though we're performing twice this year, once at Christmas and once at the end of the year. And finally, the administration and curriculum, we had to kind of narrow our things down too, but some of the things that we're excited about, we are, now have a greater confidence than ever that we're ready to move to the NTSS process in making decisions, you know, for students who might have some learning disabilities and that kind of thing. Of course, we're excited about the Orton-Gillingham training and the implementation. Another thing I put down there, there's just lots of fun every year, and I believe it's fun because it's not based on how well you'll do on those end-of-grade assessments, it's based on the work you've done on your own so far, the hard work and the effort that you've put forth, and that's our I Can Carnival. We do have it close to the end of grade, so students hopefully will remember, you know, that mindset, "I've worked hard and I can," and we're going to celebrate what we've done so far, so I always look forward to that. And then our student support team is going to participate in a book study this year called The Out of, based on that book, The Out of Sync Child. We have found that through our student support team, that more and more children are being diagnosed with sensory processing disorders, and they all look different. So we felt we had a need to try to learn more about that, how we could better meet the needs of those children, not necessarily a specific learning disability, but a need that they have, just some interesting tidbits there. One out of every six children has needs, not necessarily of the needs, have some sort of something related to sensory processing disorder. So it's all about helping those students and building relationships with their families and getting their families into a point where they're, they feel comfortable coming in and talking with us and sharing their information, and we just sit down and brainstorm together, so we think that's going to be a great thing. And Ms. Smix has already mentioned it, that we're just really excited that we met growth. We're both disappointed and excited that we, boy, I told my kids, we're nine pennies out of a hundred, that close. We are excited about that, and we'll keep driving the beach out home. Do you guys have questions for me?
It was a great presentation, thank you.
I have a comment. I'm looking forward to seeing the new phonics program when we visit, will we get, when we get, will we get to see that when we come visit?
Absolutely. It's a multi-sensory approach, you know, you saw the sand trays, they also have, I don't know if any of you do cross stitch or nail polish or anything, but they use those screens to raise the tactile element when they trace sight words and that kind of thing. It's just, there's nothing fancy about it, it's just grounded on the basic phonics principles. There's no new addition that you have to buy every year or every two years, so they're very excited about it. You know, a lot of the training has been paid for through title one funds, as well as some of our nine sixty money, so.
Don't be excited. I'll be in touch to get some dates to see, you know, when we can get it, is it scheduled? Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next report is, I'll recognize Teresa Smix for the AP test data comparison.
Those pictures from this one, kind of the... This is, Dr. Heffner asked me to just give you also a little bit about our advanced placement. We've really not ever presented about it or let you know anything before, and so we kind of wanted to let you know where we are in Alexander County. I thought I'd rather start to see, let you know what we actually offer. We have these classes, English three and four, APs, AP Calc AB, that's the first half of Calc, Statistics, Environmental Science, Biology, Chemistry, which was new this past year, so sixteen seventeen was the first year, AP US History, which this year coming, when we're in, is only offered online because instead, we're offering AP Government while we train a new teacher, because you all took one as an assistant principal at a different school. And, but, so I love the fact the high school decided to offer a different one, but for, if there were any seniors that missed it, it is being offered online. And these are the ones that we offer through NCVPS. These are classes that we currently have students in, there are other AP courses, and if the kids, as long as we don't offer them in C, if they're offered there, they are allowed to take them. So I kind of wanted to let you know how that compared to other, what the other local high schools offer, and we did some data this year and digging and looking on internet, some phone calls, and found out out of our local surrounding counties, we offered nine, that was nine in-house, we didn't count our virtual schools, we only counted the ones offered at our school. Newton Conover offers eight, and then six to nine in, they have a kind of a school within a school, it is a different, different school, it's like a magnet school, but it's located on their same campus, so I think they kind of share some of those, is how they get those numbers. Hickory City offered eight at Hickory High. Catawba at their five high schools, Bandys and Muckler Hero offered ten, just one more than us, Fred T. Ford offered two more, Maiden offered seven, and St. Stevens has thirteen. And then in Wilkes County, North Wilkes and West Wilkes, we could not find where they had any APs, but I think they're more agriculturally and they're more CTE-grounded schools. So Wilkes Central did offer the same number that we do. And then, Iredale Statesville offered from ten to twelve at their high schools, and then in Caldwell County...
And then in Caldwell County, they each offered thirteen different ones. And then how we done, this is sixteen and seventeen compared. We went, and you kind of have to look at this different, and when you look at this data, it takes a while to figure out what they're talking about. The first thing they talk about are test takers themselves, so that's the number of students that actually take the test. And so in sixteen, we had one hundred and thirty-nine. Last summer, or early spring, we had one hundred and fifty-three take the test. Nine point four of our students in sixteen took a test, and last year, eleven point two percent of our students took a test. So we're increasing the number of kids that actually take the test. In sixteen seventy-seven of those kids scored a three or higher. And this past year, eighty-four of those kids scored a three or higher. So seven more kids passed an A P exam than had done it the year before. And I know seven doesn't seem like a lot, but in our little county, that's a whole lot more kids that now have an A P score on their college entrance exam and have that college credit if they did well enough behind them. Then the percent of those kids who passed, fifty-five point four percent passed in sixteen, but fifty, only fifty-four point nine passed in seventeen, but more kids gave it a shot. So I'm, as Seth said, that's not a huge difference. Then they switch and they talk about how many tests. So as one student, I could take, you know, three A P tests in the same year. So this time, they're talking about the actual test. Two hundred and thirty-eight were taken in sixteen and two hundred and sixty-four in seventeen. A hundred and thirteen of those exams made, passed, and in the next year, a hundred and sixteen. So three more tests were passed, whether they were passed by those same seven kids or not, who knows? But we still had more exams passed in the county. Percent-wise, forty-seven point five percent of the exams were passed in sixteen and only forty-three point nine in seventeen. But again, like over thirty more tests were taken. So you still ended up, we ended up passing more tests than we passed the year before. And you can see down below where we went up or down. And then this one, the last one I just wanted to do, I know, again, we're just comparing to the other counties. And when you look in here, we didn't do too badly, and we added in a few counties that weren't the ones that just touched us, but they were kind of the size we were. And so you have some of the things to look in there of, you know, how did we compare? Is another county or different? Hickory City, for instance, we had nine point four percent, they only had ten point six. But we had fifty-five point four kids take it and they had fifty-seven. So it wasn't many more kids, but we had forty-seven point five percent of our exams that we passed and they only passed fifty-one point one. So there's not a lot of difference in the size of those two schools. And then if you go down to Wilkes County, forty-seven point nine percent of theirs passed in the former year, I mean, in sixteen. But if you look at seventeen, forty point eight in Wilkes, and we passed forty-three point nine percent. Ten point seven percent of our students took the exams and only eight point four percent of Wilkes County did this year. So we are offering more opportunities to our kids. In Caldwell County, nine point seven percent of their kids were allowed to take the test. Thirty-eight point nine percent of their exams were passed. We had forty-three point nine. So I think that not only are we giving, having more opportunities for our kids, but we're allowing them to take them. Some of the school systems, you can't take the test unless you do a certain way in the class. We let every child that takes the course take the test. So they all get that opportunity to try and see what it's like, and many of them pass it and use it for college. But I do have, and again, that one is linked, and Deborah said that sometimes when she uploads to your, that you can't use the links. So I will email them, and Deborah will let her email them out to you so that you'll have those links. Because she said sometimes that doesn't work when she uploads it to you.
I don't see it as an attachment on our agenda.
Well, she was going to add it after the two today. But instead of adding them, well, she can add them, but I'm going to also let her email them to you so that those links work.
Thank you, because I've had trouble accessing some of the links.
She said last, sometimes when she does them, I think sometimes we have the P D S stuff and then the links don't work. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll recognize Melissa Dunn, Behavioral Specialist for Alexander County Schools for our Discipline Data Summary. How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, Madam Chairman, Members of Board, and Dr. Heffner. See if I'm a little hoarse right now. A little background information about why we collect this data and why we have this compiled data. I know you've heard a little bit about the process of our M T S S and how the State Department, we're wanting to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students. And we say, "Meeting the needs of all students," I've got my clicker here, through the M T S S process. It's just a framework, and it includes a tiered process with kids that addresses academic needs, behavioral, and attendance. The state's kind of component that addresses the behavioral needs is called P B I S or Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support. And it's really exciting because it's a kind of a positive framework for the school system with how to address behavioral needs in the building. Really like it. Each school in Alexander County is in the three to five-year process, like the M T S S, of implementing P B I S. At the end of each school year, the P B I S team and the administration is responsible for putting together a discipline data summary. And so in the next few slides, you're going to see me refer to O D Rs, Office Discipline Referrals is what that means. So the data is strictly on Office Discipline Referrals. So the students that are sent to the office, and we know that the M T S S process and P B I S is a data-driven process. So it's wonderful because that data allows the team to look at where are the patterns of behaviors and what's going on that we're getting these Office Discipline Referrals. So what I did is took all of the individual schools' discipline data summary, compiled it into one for the whole county. So we could kind of see generally across the county as a whole what we're looking at. If you'll look at the end of June of last year, the total number of students enrolled in Alexander County was four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three at the time that we submitted the report to the state. Of those four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three, there was one thousand seven hundred and twenty-four Office Discipline Referrals. These were Office Discipline Referrals that were recorded in Power Schools, so they were actually put into the computer system. You can see a breakdown by month of how many Office Discipline Referrals, and I have this and then I have a graph next to it. So you can see that October, usually that's kind of when the news wears off, they're starting to push limits a little bit, they've made it through September. And then as you move forward into February, we know consistency with behavior, we're off of our routines a little bit, we've been through the holidays, and we've had some, you know, delays, we're off of our routine, and so that affects in February. And then it spikes again in May, which is at the end of the year. And I think that's to kind of be predicted. And so this is the same, a bar graph where you can just kind of see Office Discipline Referrals by month. The next is a breakdown by race and ethnicity. So you can kind of see the total number of enrolled, the American Indian, Asian, Black, African American, Hispanic, two or more, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and White. And then you can see, that gives you your total enrollment out of the O D Rs, what is the percentage of Office Discipline Referrals by ethnicity, just to make sure that we're a little balanced there. Same thing here, percentage of O D Rs and the percentage of actual enrollment. So the one on the far right is white, and then it goes down to the next is the Black, African American, and then Hispanic. Pushed together there. Referrals by grade level, this is pretty interesting. Keep in mind that we've got, elementary's got six grades, middle's three, and high has four. But the total number, I don't have the last one, I can't see from there. So for high school, seventeen point nine percent of those referrals came from high school. Forty-four point three came from elementary, and then thirty-eight point eight from middle school. And so I wrote down on the bottom there, you can actually see, there were seven hundred and sixty-four Office Discipline Referrals in elementary, middle school, six hundred and fifty-one, and the high school is three hundred and nine.
Melissa, can I ask a question here? Is that a combination of bus referrals along with classroom referrals? So those are not broken out, I'm assuming?
Right, so one of the last referrals, as we look at location, type of incident, and so you'll see the bus referrals are in there, which is pretty interesting because that's some pretty telling data. One of the things that the individual schools look at is location of incident, which is really important. That way, we can do some reteaching if they're having more Office Discipline Referrals, say, from the bus or the playground. And like Ms. Peak said, you know, they've got their new playground, so they went out and they taught the kids the, you know, the rules, the expectations out on the playground. So you can look at your data to kind of help drive that and how you're going to educate. This is the same thing, bar graph, you can see that the highest percentage of referrals are coming in from middle school, and that's, you know, middle school's kind of a tough time. There's a lot going in middle school. And I kind of like too, you can see that it, you know, for the high school, you've got your ninth grade is the highest with referrals, but by the time they get down to twelfth grade, it kind of diminishes a little bit, and they're growing up a little bit, a little more maturity. This is what you were referring to, Dr. Heffner. So what I did is that when they go into Power School, they have to pick the type of incident that the Office Discipline Referral was for. And so I compiled the top incidents countywide. So if you look, there was three hundred and seventy Office Discipline Referrals or thirty-three percent for busness behavior.
And I have to ask this, is that why that elementary number's a little elevated?
Yes, because I have a feeling there's more office, and if we break down the Office Discipline Referrals, how many of those bus referrals are by elementary?
Yes. I'd love to know that because-
We might be able to pull that out and get a little help and see. I think some of the elementary schools have come up with an initiative and a positive reinforcement system to acknowledge kids that are behaving appropriately on the bus. But I also think statewide, we have more kids riding our buses now than we have in the past per bus, which I think increases a little bit of the referrals.
Well, when I talk to principals, often they will reference misbehavior on buses. That, you know, it's difficult.
It's a challenge, yes. Disruptive behavior, you know, the principals kind of know what falls under those categories and where to place it. Two hundred and seventy Office Referrals at nineteen point five percent. Fighting, which is interesting, so you know, that's actual physical aggression towards others. Six point three or seventy Office Discipline Referrals. Aggressive behavior, which would be different if threatening types of, you know, behavior, verbal threats. Two hundred and seventy-four Office Discipline Referrals. Inappropriate language, a hundred and eighty-one Office Discipline Referrals at sixteen point two percent. So that's our top incident by referral by county as a whole. And then I just, I'm not going to go over this, but this will just kind of let you know the categories that they're looking at, because I've already pulled out the highest one to do the previous pie graph. But there's a whole list of incident types that are included within the bar graph. And that is the end. So if there's any clarification or any additional questions that I can offer for anyone?
That's really interesting information.
Yeah. You know, I think there's a lot of things that are handled that don't necessarily, wouldn't be considered an Office Discipline Referral, but this is stuff that's significant enough that it's documented, and so I think it's good data individually for the schools to see how to make choices and decisions and how to problem solve within their building. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you very much. It's nice to know that those referrals drop by the time they're ready to graduate. Now I'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our Superintendent's Report.
This report is attached in your agenda. I would just ask everyone to remember the family of Dr. Josephine Foster. Dr. Foster passed away this week. She served in many capacities in the Alexander County Schools and was the nineteen ninety-eight recipient of the prestigious Award of Honor. She also served on the Board of Education after her retirement, and I must say that my first encounter with Dr. Foster was as a high school student at A C H S. Actually, one of the classiest women that I possibly have ever known, had a real heart for children, had a heart for Alexander County. And I told myself even in high school, when I grew up, I wanted to be like Dr. Foster. So certainly, she has always been special in my heart. We found out today that the family will receive Friends at Stony Point United Methodist Church on Friday, that's September fifteenth, from one until two P M. The funeral will follow at two, and the burial will be in the church cemetery. I just put before you tonight, Board, that memorials can be made either to the Stony Point United Methodist Church or to Samaritan's Purse Disaster Relief Fund in Boone. And I would just ask you, as I have you as a group, do you have a preference which memorial we make as a school board? Because we, of course, will, because she's a former administrator.
Anybody have a preference? Okay.
Good, we'll pick and take care of that. Secondly, the North Carolina School Boards Association District Meetings are underway, and our District Seven meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, at Avery High School in Newland. The meeting will be from four until eight with dinner included. If you are interested in attending, I need for you to let Deborah know as soon as possible, preferably tomorrow if possible, because we do need to get registered and make plans as far as, I need to change a parent focus group meeting in my schedule. And I can reschedule that if some of you want to attend the meeting. Also, the North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Conference will be held in Greensboro November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. If you are interested in attending that conference, please let Deborah know. It says at your earliest convenience for registration, but it's already filling up. I would really like to know by Friday, if that's possible. So if you'll look at your November calendar and let Deborah know if you want to attend. We do have school visits scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-first. We're going to visit the Student Success Center and Alexander Early College. We're going to meet at the Student Success Center at eleven thirty and then transition to the Early College, and lunch will be delivered that day to the site at the Early College about twelve fifty. So I hope that you'll attend. I think that you will be pleased with what you see. We're in the third and final year of our strategic plan, and we are beginning to conduct district-level comprehensive needs assessments, which will be used to inform that new strategic plan. And as part of this process, we plan to involve parents in a way that's never been tried before in the county. Dr. Curry and I have twelve meetings scheduled in our fall calendar, sorry. And we're going to be conducting parent advisory focus group meetings for each of the schools. We plan to ask parents what they want for our school system and seek involvement in making sure that our public schools continue to be the very best educational option for children in Alexander County. We're committed to the expansion of opportunities and know that parents have much information to offer in sharing the needs of their children and their desires for quality learning experiences. I look forward to sharing our findings with you after we finish up with the parent advisory groups, and that will probably be early on in the second semester, sometime in January, maybe, because our last meetings will be held in the middle of November. As you know, we have a joint meeting scheduled with the county commissioners and the C V C C staff. That meeting is scheduled for October ninth, beginning at six, in our boardroom. I really look forward to discussing future plans for the Early College. We do have our celebration of community partners scheduled. It's scheduled for Monday, October sixteenth, beginning at six, at the auditorium. Please mark your calendar with this special annual event. And then I said lastly, but then I added two things after I added that paragraph. Our elementary schools will be involved in the annual Fall Can Food Drive during the week of October second through the sixth. Last year, we collected almost thirty-eight thousand cans of food, and we hope to surpass that total this year. With five food pantries in the county, approximately fifty- With five food pantries in the county, approximately fifty thousand pounds of food is provided to families each month in Alexander County. And I am really proud that our schools participate in this giving event. For clarification, I wanted to just remind you of a couple of things. I have provided you our enrollment numbers for the first ten days of school. Our allotted ADM for two thousand seventeen eighteen is four thousand nine hundred thirty-two. To clarify for you, that is the number we have been funded at for this year, not the current number that you saw yesterday for day ten. The, the current number is four thousand eight hundred ninety-three. The allotted ADM for last school year, that was sixteen seventeen, was four thousand nine hundred ninety-two. It was exactly sixty fewer students. Those numbers, those allotment numbers are so close, they sound alike, they look alike. I wanted to make sure that you understand the difference and that you're using correct numbers. And as of day ten, we had thirty-nine fewer students than we have been allotted with our ADM. So that means that we are looking like we are going to be safe as far as our funding at this, at this point and we will not have to revert money back to the state. Now, the state will look at day twenty. I have provided you numbers through day ten. So understand that it's, it's not set in stone here on day ten, but I'm thinking that we're safe this year and won't have to revert money back. And then the very last thing that I failed to include, wanted to remind everyone that we have our first early dismissal day for elementary schools on Thursday. So that one actually sneaked up on me and I didn't realize it until yesterday that that was scheduled for this week, but that is the first of those ten days that have been added to the calendar just for elementary schools. Any questions?
I would just like to commend the school administration for the two-hour delay this morning. That wasn't mentioned, but that was a very smart call.
Yes.
And I appreciate, as a parent, I appreciate that and as a board member.
Well, we skirted one and count your blessings. Count your blessings, all right.
Just to let you know to board members, if you have any specific questions that you would like to have answered or to discuss with the meeting we're having on the ninth with the commissioners, the commissioners have asked for those to be presented to them early so that they can think about it or get any information they need. So if you have any questions specifically for me to forward to them, if you could please get those questions to me by the end of September, that will give them ten days before, nine or ten days before our meeting. Okay?
I guess we'll reciprocate with that also.
Well, they're, they are presenting us with a list. So I thought we should return that favor so we can make a productive meeting out of it.
I was just going to say, the best way to submit those to you will be through email?
Uh, yes, please. I think so. And then I'll try and compile them or you and I can get together, you and Vice Chairman Bowman and I can get together and we can try and compile them if there's a, a list of them. All right, so we're going to move on to new business and I would, for the Sugarloaf, we didn't have any policy revisions this month. Yeah, okay. We're going to move on to new business, the Sugarloaf Fire Department lease. Yeah, I know. I'd recognize Board Member Schrum.
Uh, yes, as you know, our lease is expiring with the Sugarloaf Fire Department and the building's not complete. They're in the process of a change order that's kind of tied them up at this point. The shell of the building is complete, but they're, can't proceed with the interior stud work till the change order's been approved. And so anyhow, we're going to have to renew again and Facilities Committee's recommendation is that we renew for an additional six months at the current four hundred dollar per month rate.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. So that comes in the form of a motion from the.
Yes, they'll have to accept it after that, yeah. But yes, we'll make that presentation to them and they can accept or not.
Or not. All right. So I need a second on that? Second. Is there any discussion?
Most single wides in Alexander County rent for in excess of four hundred dollars a month. It's a good deal, really good deal.
Yeah, they're getting a good deal.
It's a very good deal.
So any other discussion? I would just like to note for the record that we, we reconvene the Facilities Committee two months prior to the expiration of that lease, whatever, I guess would go from August to February, is that right? Technically, it'd be September first, so.
Yes, September one to February twenty-eighth.
Yeah. So if you could put that on like the agenda for December?
Yes.
Because I think there might be some discussion.
Oh, there will be discussion at that point. There shall be more discussion, I'm sure.
So have, to discuss this lease extension at the December fourteenth, correct?
The, the next lease, lease ex, extension.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what's going to transpire with that building and this lease after February twenty-eighth?
Okay.
This is our third lease extension, is that correct?
Well, I think it's the second extension.
The second extension, the first lease was for a year.
Okay.
And then we've had two.
Two second extensions.
It's a third term, okay.
So we'll revisit that then and I just don't want to forget, it kind of crept up on me.
We'll go ahead and, and create a December folder and stick this in.
Thank you. Okay, so do, we have a motion, a second, any more discussion? All's in favor of approval of extending the Sugarloaf Volunteer Fire Department lease for an additional six months at the same terms. Please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And you, you might want to reach out to them and. Okay, anything else? All right, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, sub eleven A six.
Second.
Motion is second, all's in favor, please say aye. All right, we're going to go into closed session.